Hello again, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Inside Lowell Daily Pulse, the Thursday, October 23rd edition of the Daily Pulse. I'm your host, Teddy Panos, coming here from the WellPoint Studios here in downtown Lowell. And this is actually a special edition of the Daily Pulse. For one, we're recording it on Wednesday, October 22nd. I'll let you in on a little secret because that was the best time to get the two candidates in here. The other reason it's a special edition of the Daily Pulse is because it does feature two candidates. The two candidates vying to represent District Four on the next Lowell City Council. And they are joining us here in the WellPoint Studios. Excited to have them both here. Seated alphabetically from left to right, Wayne Janess, the incumbent city councillor. Good, well, good morning, good evening, Wayne, whatever it is. Good to have you here.
Great to be here. Thanks for having me, Teddy. I appreciate this opportunity to come in and chat.
I appreciate the opportunity to get some more information out to the voters. Sean McDonough is Wayne's opponent in the race. He's joining us here as well. How are you, Sean?
I'm good. How are you?
I am fantastic.
Happy day, I guess.
Happy day. Yeah, actually, on the Wednesday, they were recording it. The sun finally came out. It was pouring this morning, but you guys brought the sunshine with you, so.
We try to do.
Once I get me in the basement at the high school, the bad weather goes away.
I appreciate it. We're going to get to our discussion in just a quick second. Of course, as part of the Daily Pulse, I need to thank my Daily Pulse sponsors. Ray Booton, licensed realtor in Massachusetts and New Hampshire, certified appraiser in both states as well. So if you're looking to buy or sell a home, a business, or a commercial property, you need to find Ray today, and you can get ahold of him easily enough online, realestateraybooton.com. That's realestateraybooton.com. And also, we thank our friends at WellPoint for hosting us here in the WellPoint Studios. It's the only health plan offering healthcare benefits exclusively to Massachusetts GIC members at WellPoint. Your whole health is their whole point. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, WellPoint. We turn our attention now to the candidates vying for District Four city councillor. The debate format, I'll read the rules for our audience out there again. Similar to all of our candidate forums here at Inside Lowell, each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement and a one-minute closing statement. Candidates will have the opportunity to address each question asked. I may ask a brief follow-up based on the discussion and how it progresses. Any candidate specifically mentioned by the other candidate, criticized or whatnot, will have an opportunity, if you let me know, to offer a brief rebuttal on that discussion. We ask that you keep your responses between 60 and 90 seconds in length. No clock, no buzzers, no yellow and red warning cards. But if you start to see me get a little antsy here in my seat, it means we're going to move on pretty quickly. You're seated alphabetically, and that's how we will do the rotation. Wayne Janess will make the opening statement first, followed by Sean McDonough. Sean McDonough, you will get the first question, followed by Mr. Janess, and then we'll alternate back and forth the same way. Closing statement, Sean McDonough will provide it first, Wayne Janess second. So, without any further ado, here's your opportunity to make your introductory comments. Each candidate's one-minute opening statement. We'll start with you, Mr. Janess.
All right. Thank you, Ted. First, I'd just like to say thanks for the opportunity to come in and chat. Thanks to Sean for being here as well. Always appreciate these kind of opportunities to address the voters and get our message out. So I've been on the city council now coming to the end of my second term. I first ran when we adopted the new election system of district and at-large representation. And so I've been the District Four representative since that election in 2021. I've really enjoyed my time on the city council. I've really tried to focus on quality of life issues, infrastructure, affordable housing development, and other things around the city. I've really built some good relationships with the various neighborhood groups that make up District Four. We got quite a few of them. I've really worked well and closely with the city administration to address a lot of the issues that I hear about day-to-day from folks. My day job is I work as an IT professional for a software company. So I bring a kind of systems mindset and approach to problem solving. I like being presented with issues and trying to figure out how to solve them and why they started in the first place and how we can prevent them from coming back. So I try to bring that take and that angle to my work on the city council. It's really been a great opportunity. I've really enjoyed this work, and I'm asking for your vote so that I can continue to serve the people of District Four and the city of Lowell. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Janess. Mr. McDonough, to you.
So my name is Sean McDonough. I'm a special education teacher at Lowell High School. I live on Market Street above Brut Awakening with my wife and one-year-old son. And I'm running for the same reason that a lot of people in the same position as me are moving to Hudson, New Hampshire, and to Drake it. I see a whole host of problems and potential solutions that I'm sure we're going to talk about, Teddy, and thank you for having us, and thanks for having me on however many months ago now. And I'm excited to bring, I'm hopeful to bring my advocacy and my collaborative approach in the problem solving that you get as a special education teacher in a city like Lowell to the city council and to start making improvements in the quality of life for residents in District Four. Things like equal access to parks, parking that doesn't bankrupt you, and sidewalks that you can push a stroller on or roll in a wheelchair or push a walker, which I know is an ongoing struggle. And so, yeah, honestly, I've knocked on about 1,000 doors. I'm not lying. I said that number, and I thought I was kidding. And then I looked at my spreadsheet, and I have knocked on 1,000 doors. I have been at every neighborhood meeting except Pawtucketville every time since I announced because Pawtucketville and Centerville meet at the same time. But yeah, this has been a really great experience running, and I'm going to ask for your vote starting October 25th.
All right. Thank you to both of you. First question, we're going to start with you, Sean. Lowell is poised to receive a massive infusion of development money from the frontrunner city initiative. A lot of that is going to be in the form of mixed-use housing based on what I was able to see up in Toronto and what has already been done. And it appears that your district is going to see a ton of new housing units. Is that a good thing or a bad thing for a downtown that has a variety of already existing challenges?
I think that depends. I think it depends on what the vision, the goals, and the driver behind this development is. And so, as I read the rhythms of change book and looked at the Link project, at the frontrunner thing, and a history of frankly failed developments in downtown, I think we're at a very interesting time of both optimism and also what you would call the naysayers, Teddy, right? And I think part of the way that we make this infusion of development a good thing, that we sell this as a good thing and that I get and you get something nice out of this is by having a councillor that's willing to hold these developers accountable, that we don't have a repeat of Sal LePoli, that we don't have a repeat of the Hamilton Canal, that we don't have a repeat of, and this well predates the incumbent, that we don't have a 20 years ago when we said, "That's the jam area," and then nothing happened. We need to make sure that the residents that are currently here and any future residents get a quality of life that is on par with comparable cities, other neighborhoods in the city, and is not just a place to sleep at night. That's how we make housing development a positive for the district.
Thank you. Mr. Janess.
Sure. Thank you. The frontrunner cities initiative and the potential for investment into the city represents a huge opportunity for the city of Lowell. In terms of the specific mixed-use development, I'm all in favor of that. The downtown right now has about a 99% occupancy rate. When you have occupancy rates that high, it proves that A, you've got a product that people want. B, it increases the cost of housing because there's no slack in the system. People aren't able to move in because there's no opportunity to do that, or they're doing it at great expense. The only way to really bring that occupancy rate down a little bit, you want to have about 5% or 6% of a vacancy rate in order to stimulate turnover, but also have opportunities for people to move in and take advantage of that. So the only way we're ever going to do that is to produce more housing. Mixed use is really what I think fits with the district. It fits the kind of traditional downtown feel where you have a retail space on the first floor and you have residential units above. We've seen success with this. We've seen other projects, like you look at the Hildreth Building. That's exactly what's happening over there. It's happening all across the downtown, and I think this is really how we want to move forward. In terms of existing developments and the problems they've caused or problems we've had with developers, specifically, we'll look at the Sal LePoli project in the Hamilton Canal District. That predates anyone who's currently on the council now. I'd just like to be clear about that. This current council was able to work with the administration, get them to work with the developer in order to move away from that, move away from Sal LePoli, and move all that contract and that land onto a new developer. That new developer will have a new land disposition agreement that is vastly improved over the one that was given to Sal LePoli, that will have clear targets and clear measurable progress rates that the developer needs to hit. And if they don't, the city is going to have more leverage so that we don't get stuck in the same situation again. That is the approach we need to take with any contracted project, not just the properties that Sal owned, but any project, including all the frontrunner cities work that's going to be coming to the city.
Sean, you wanted to...
Yeah, I want to be double down on being clear here. The original agreement with Sal LePoli predates this council. The new land disposition agreement with Cabot, Cabot, and Forbes is this council. You get the credit and you get the blame. The way in which that Hamilton, the Hamilton Canal District has been handled, where we had a developer, he came in, he sold a bill of goods. He said, "You're going to get this tower, and you're going to have all of these nice, this nice rendering. We're going to do all of these things." And then he mortgaged the land, and then he built a very nice development in Havrell, and he built a very nice development in Hampton, and he built a really nice development in a third city who I'm currently blanking on. I had it written down on my hand, but it's washed away. In this council, saw Sal LePoli do all of this. And then they chose to let Sal LePoli pick the developer that was going to come in, water down the agreement, come in, fix perhaps old mistakes. And now we get a four-story wood-framed building with apartments, right? Like, that's what we get on the largest plot of land in downtown. And you have, at the time, now, right? You had Richard Howe, you had Eric Getcher, you had Ryan Gilde. Three people who I can't believe would ever agree on anything, right? All saying, "Why are we not taking the city's land back? Why are we not willing to enforce a contract that we have and ensure that residents downtown get what we bargained for?" And if the vision is not what it was 20 years ago when we laid out this innovation district, if we say Lowell today is a different place, and it is, then why not start again? Come with a new bit. We have frontrunner city coming in. We have Link coming in. What was the rush, I guess, right? The rush to build is great, but to build what?
I want to give you an opportunity to respond to that because you are part of that council that is being criticized.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So it was really about the existing agreement and our options under it. We could have moved to take the land back and nullify the agreement. But the advice that we received from our attorneys was that if we were to do that, we were looking at a situation where Sal LePoli could walk onto parcel three, shove a shovel in the ground, and say, "Look, I've started construction." And then we had no leverage at all to do anything. And it would have been a lawsuit that could have taken five, 10, or more years. And I think that if we look back at when the Hamilton Canal master plan was written in 2007, it's been a while. And this was an opportunity for us to cleanly get out of the agreement that nobody wanted to be in and move forward. Yes, there were some concessions here of us not being able to advertise it and pick any developer under the sun. But in my opinion, as was the opinion of the majority of the council, that was a better option than putting us in a situation where we would have had to potentially be embroiled in a lawsuit for the next decade-plus when not being able to do anything over there.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Next question. We'll start with you, Mr. Janess. The topic of safe injection sites became a hot-button issue recently and may or may not become again, depending on what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts chooses to do. Would you support the city allowing one if the state okays them? And if so, would you be okay with it being located somewhere in your district?
So, when the first discussion came up about this, it was centered around one potential law that is sitting in the state legislature. The state legislature has a track record of passing less than 10% of the bills that are introduced in any one term for quite a while. So I really feel it's cart before horse to start figuring out whether or not we're going to allow something in the city that's currently not allowed anywhere in the state. However, if we do presume that by some magic it does get allowed by the state legislature, and honestly, I don't really think that's going to happen, then I think that we need to have some very deep discussions about what that would look like before we can consider whether or not it would go in the city. I'm not advocating for one to come into the city. I'm not advocating for one not to come into the city. But I'm advocating for good policymaking that involves discussions with our public health folks in the area, with experts nationwide to figure out how you could do this safely. I don't know what that is, and it's certainly not hanging a shingle up and opening a door. So if we're going to do it, we need to do it right. But I'm not sure that we can do it right now with the resources we have. If we're going to do it, it's going to be a long discussion in my mind. And it's going to be something that we're going to have to be very close partners with whomever's going to run this and the state with whatever regulatory things they're going to put on top of this. However, what we're looking at now is my colleagues on the council have proposed an outright ban, which is coming up for discussion at a public hearing. I'm really anxious to get to that public hearing just to hear the input. We heard some input when it was first introduced a couple of weeks ago. November 18th is when the public hearing is scheduled, so I'm really looking forward to that discussion. In terms of where it would go, I really feel like if it does happen, it probably would be in District Four only because that's where a majority of the services for everything in this kind of general vicinity are. But I'm not comfortable with us opening one right now. There's a lot of work we have to do before we can even cross that bridge.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
So the question was just about safe injection sites?
Yes.
Sorry. I just wanted, I was like, I want to make sure I don't just, you know?
Yeah, to be clear, the legislation that has been proposed multiple terms now at the State House is called harm reduction, but as part of that, it's specifically mentioned safe injection.
Right. And so, quite honestly, at this point in the city of Lowell, I know, right? If this was tomorrow, no. No. If it was next week, no. If we're talking about years from now, when we've figured out how to run a or have a nonprofit partner run a needle exchange that doesn't turn one needle into 10, into 100, into 1,000, maybe, and we've exhausted, like, Teddy, like, I think most other, you had Rodney on your show a couple of weeks, Rep Elliott on your show a couple of weeks ago, and I think he said something similar. If we've exhausted all of the other options and we're still seeing things, and we've implemented, we figured out how to implement a needle exchange system that works. We've figured out how to provide more housing. We are enforcing city ordinances on certain convenience stores that are selling drug paraphernalia. We are doing all of the things, and the state is providing the funding for those things, which they are currently not to an adequate level. Then it's a discussion to have. I don't fully understand the purpose of the current motion. It's preemptive. That said, if this were tomorrow, right now, I think the answer has to be, no, we need, no, we're not ready for that yet. Could we be? Maybe, but not now, not in a future that I see on the immediate horizon.
Okay. Thank you. Next question. We'll start with you, Mr. McDonough. The next city budget is shaping up to be one that includes a very hefty tax increase. According to the manager's office, 1.6% increase is necessary for the high school construction alone. And with all the other expected costs and what you figure is probably a minimum 2.5% increase, you're looking at a four-plus percentage point tax increase. Is that acceptable to you? And if not, where specifically would you start to cut or reduce in the budget your spending to keep that increase as low as possible?
I think when we talk about District Four and we talk about affordability, which conversations about the tax rate are, right? In a decent portion of this district, there are people living in generational homes who, they own a single family or they own a multifamily, but it's grandmas, right? Grandma built that house, or grandpa built that house. And that doesn't necessarily mean that the income is rising at a pace that can pay that tax rate. It also, it also means that you have working people that do manage to own something, which is an opportunity that increasingly is diminishing, right? The latter is getting kicked out. And in District Four, we have the lovely burden of the enterprise funds, but not the trash enterprise. Well, in downtown, we don't have the trash enterprise fund. We have the parking, and we have the wastewater and the water. But the parking enterprise fund is a massive, it's a very large burden on working people in District Four who are paying about $100 a month per car. So 1,200, right now, 1,200 bucks a year for one car, and I am rounding. There's a couple of dollars there. 2,400 for two cars if there's two working adults. We also have to pay for private trash pickup. If you're in an apartment, it's built into your rent. If you're in a condo, your building has to pay a private trash contractor. We subsidize the neighborhood's trash pickup, just like they allegedly subsidize our parking, which is really just us subsidizing the city's gamble on the HCID garage, which is losing money because Sal LePoli built a giant garage next to our garage. So if taxes have to go up, we need to have a broader conversation about affordability, I guess, is where I want to go. We need to be looking at the enterprise funds. We need to be looking at the tax rate. We need to be looking at payroll at City Hall. And we need to have a conversation about the number of people that received a $25,000 raise from the last fiscal year to this fiscal year. That's not a sustainable rate of salary growth, excuse me.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Janess.
Thanks. There's a lot there, so I'm trying not to derail the whole conversation. But yes, we are looking at a significant tax increase. There's no two ways about it. And the only really way to counter this is to grow the pie, is to grow our taxable land and taxable value across the city through new development, through improvements of existing developments that already exist, et cetera. As well as, you know, we also really need to look at our partners, whether it's the university or other large entities within the city that currently don't pay taxes. Now, the university does pay a pilot payment to the city, payment in lieu of taxes for anyone who doesn't know what that means. That helps, but we need to continue to have those conversations and make sure that where we are doing development, we're doing it in a way that can generate taxes. If we want to specifically talk about enterprise funds, the parking enterprise fund is a challenge for the city. The parking revenue is still recovering from the pandemic. Whether or not you want to believe that, if you look at the numbers, it's just true. We are taking in less money now than we did prior to the pandemic. We also do have the new Hamilton Canal garage, which was really required before we could have done anything in the Hamilton Canal District. The developers we were working with basically said, "Look, I can't build anything unless there's somewhere for people to park." The Sal LePoli garage probably shouldn't have happened. We certainly shouldn't have given him the tax break we gave him on that garage, but that's another discussion entirely. The trash enterprise fund, well, it's currently not an enterprise fund, but it is subsidized by the general fund. There is also a user fee that people who do have trash pickup, they do pay. We, as a council, have moved the needle a little bit there, trying to get more of those costs to be paid for by the people who do utilize that service. And as Sean mentioned, there's really very little overlap. If you're parking in the garage, you probably don't have curbside trash pickup. If you have curbside trash pickup, you probably aren't parking in the garage downtown. Both things are offset a little bit by the general fund that kind of gets in the weed. And I see you're getting ready to push your button, so I'm not going to go down that road. But overall, the 4% tax increase that we're really probably looking at here is a reality. We got to figure out how to square the circle. I don't have anything on my mind that I want to go cut right now. I feel like we have spent a lot of time and a lot of effort bringing back services and addressing the mounds of deferred maintenance across the city. And we're finally at a point where we're moving forward and think people can see and feel those improvements. And I don't want to set that back just so that we can say we didn't raise taxes because that's how we got in this problem in the first place.
All right. Thank you both. We'll start the next question with you, Mr. Janess. The Markley Group expansion has been another one of those hot-button topics, and it will be again either shortly after the election or maybe with the next council. So if you're serving Mr. McDonough, you may get a say on this. Is there a scenario where you could see yourself supporting their request for increased diesel fuel storage? Assuming that they do the best they possibly can to address the specific neighborhood concerns, noise and that kind of stuff, if they can address those to some level of satisfaction, is their request for increased diesel fuel storage a yes or a no based on the overall energy usage climate debate that's going on throughout the world, not just Lowell?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Teddy. As I mentioned, I am an IT professional, so I do quite a bit of work with data centers and kind of understand really what's going on here. The root cause of all this stuff for me is there is no trust right now between Markley and the neighbors. Markley has been there for about 10 years and has basically done whatever they want, without question. We're at a point now where the neighbors are saying, "Enough, no more." And until we can repair that relationship, I don't see how any kind of expansion can go forward. However, if that relationship can be repaired, whether it's through a community benefit agreement or them just being willing to talk to the neighbors and people to understand what's going on better, them making efforts to upgrade the existing infrastructure that they have so it pollutes less, so it makes less noise, it's really a tough sell for me right now. However, if you look at what they've done already as part of this project, they've done all the construction work or they're finishing the construction work. They've already installed all these generators. The only thing we're talking about now is whether or not they're actually allowed to put diesel fuel in them. I do want them to continue investing in green energy and technology and find ways to become less reliant on diesel fuel. I made a motion and asked the administration to prepare a letter, send that to the state delegation to try and find ways to open up other alternative energy paths. All of those generators that are being installed could be fueled with something like hydro-treated vegetable oil, which is not diesel fuel. It has its own challenges, to be sure. It's not a magic button we can press here. There's currently no supply or you cannot get the supply you would need to be able to fuel those generators. However, I think we're at a point now where we're talking about the largest diesel storage in the entire city of Lowell if that expansion were to be approved. And I don't know that that's ever going to be tenable, but it certainly isn't tenable until we get to a point where the neighbors can actually feel safe and heard by Markley. That's step one for me.
Okay. Mr. McDonough.
No. That's my answer. The answer is no. I can say more. I'm going to say more, but the answer is no. The answer is no. The neighbors today say the answer is no. I think the neighbors tomorrow are going to have an answer that's no. I would not want to raise my child in a neighborhood with close to 200,000 gallons of diesel fuel laying around. I think that the Markley Group has had the better part of a decade to establish a relationship with the neighborhood that was not one of animosity and mistrust and trying to use inside connections to win at the council and to work with the neighbors and that they have every step of the way chosen not to do that. I think that when I woke up the day after the council... I woke up the day after the council meeting back end of June, early July, the, the, the last expansion that, that got. Approved and instead of running across the river and going up Christian Hill, I turned and I ran towards. The Shaughnessy School where I used to teach and then I turned again and I was at Markley. And it's like the Death Star. I mean, it is, it's aesthetically ugly. Beyond that, I started talking, I stopped, I stopped running and I started talking to people who can't vote for me. And every single person over there that I talked to was one willing to talk to a random sweaty man about how awful this company is, which is. It says a lot about how awful it must be to live next to that company. And I, I kept talking to them and I started going to neighborhood meetings that they've had and. They have bought, the Markley Group has, has bought up Prince Ave. They've, they're buying houses on Iowa Street. They're buying houses. On the street whose name I am forgetting, that is not I O T S. They are in talks with the industrially zoned plots that, that are adjoining them. They are not being transparent about their expansion plans. They're, they're not. There are data center that owns half of a neighborhood at, at this point, right? And. There are ways that Markley can expand without continuing, without. Adding ninety six thousand gallons of diesel in the middle of Sacred Heart. I just. I, I can't see a world in which I say, yeah, nine ninety six thousand gallons of diesel in the middle of Sacred Heart. It's a great idea. Don't, don't put a battery.
Would, I'm gonna do a brief follow up on this, is. Cause I'm curious whether this is a neighborhood issue or an environmental issue or some level of both. We've heard the same neighbors kind of speak at all the meetings, but I've also seen a lot of people who aren't in the neighborhood come and speak on the environmental. Concerns. You're a no to any expansion, is that correct?
I am a no to increasing the amount of diesel being stored in that neighborhood.
So that means you wouldn't want them to be able to expand their operations?
It means that I wouldn't want them to expand the amount of diesel if they're storing in that neighborhood. Could I be moved if there's a really beefy CBA and the neighborhood group? Comes back and the, the. Interested parties come back and they say, no, like this is it, we did it, like we live here, we, we promise this is it, like actually we are all. Yeah, I'm not gonna tell the neighbors that I know what's best for them. What I am saying though is that I don't, I don't know. I do not see those neighbors moving in any conversation that I've had around that neighborhood, not just with the people that go to the city council meetings. I don't see the neighborhood moving on the, on the diesel issue. I don't.
Okay, Mr. Janess, if the, the diesel issue is the one that kind of unites the neighborhood opposition and the environmental opposition. Yours, if it means that Markley can't expand.
That's, so I, I have a few concerns here. One is if you're gonna negotiate something like a CBA, it needs to be a give and take between the neighbors and. And Markley. Right now, Markley has, if they don't want to expand, there's no incentive for them to do anything like a CBA. So if, if you want to negotiate a CBA as part of repairing the trust, they're gonna want. Some, they're gonna want to get something out of that. And then right now, that's probably the expansion of diesel fuel because. We can talk about other technologies, but as things stand right now, if you own a data center and if you are. Telling your customers that we're gonna have, you know, the ability to operate in the, in the event that, that the grid goes down. You have to have a way to do that. Batteries sound great, but look at Tuxbury, they're having a, a fight with that right now too. So, and lithium batteries have their own fire potential and everything. That's a whole other discussion, but also. That's not what you do if you own a data center right now. That is not a accepted technology that anyone's doing. And yes, I would like Markley to be kind of on the forefront of this stuff, but I don't expect them to be trying untested technologies. Because that's not a good way to attract customers if you're a data center. So. If, if they're going to stay and expand their operation beyond the end of their, of their TIF agreement, which they still have another. Ten years on before the city of Lowell will see a dime from that property or anything inside there. We're gonna need to find a way to work with them and to keep them in a state where they want to continue operating there. Because the last thing I want to see is us to come to the end of the TIF and Markley say, well, it's been fun, I'll see you. Cause then what did Lowell get out of signing a twenty year TIF with them other than the jobs, right? So that's my concern. It needs to be a conversation between the neighbors, the city and the, and the company. They all have to be rowing in the same direction here or we're not gonna get anywhere.
Okay.
We barely, we barely got the jobs, right? We got, we got I B E W, we got Local one oh three, okay? I don't want the one other guys to lose their job, right? I, I'm supposed to say that I was endorsed by the, the Central Labor Council, right? So thank you to, to the unions. But we don't have laborers on site, like we, we don't, we're not getting union jobs. The city is not getting good paying union jobs outside of one oh three. We, we don't have. Union laborers. There was an issue with the carpenters union. They were doing an informational line the week after. The council vote because they're using, Markley is, is using a subcontractor that. Is a, it's a non-union carpenter that frequently breaks wage laws. They've had a few issues up in New Hampshire with this. So the, the quality of job that we're getting out of Markley is not. Not what was sold, right? That, that's not what we agreed to. The rate of expansion has, depends on who you ask, if it's what we were sold or not. And at the end of the day, it is a neighborhood issue, it's a public health issue, it's an environmental issue. And it is a. To write to the city issue. It's, do you want a city council that is. Willing to advocate for your vision of your city that wants you to have the quality of life that, that you deserve? Or do you want a city council that says, well, we're on the hook for another ten years of a TIF, we better just let them, you know? We, we gave him twenty years of, of tax incentive financing and the, what they've done in that time is. Buy up a bunch of residential property. Explore, and I. Explore expanding into other industrial property, ignore complaints of the neighborhood and. What, every couple of months they're gonna come back and look for another? Several, a, a couple dozen gallons of diesel?
Alright, I, I want to give Counselor Janess a quick minute to respond, but I do feel I have to clear up what I believe is a misconception out there and it might have been fed into a little bit here. The Markley Group is paying taxes on that property. The, the way TIFs work, as I understand them, they're on a sliding scale. So in year one of the twenty year agreement, they got a one hundred percent exemption and it worked its way down. So right now, if we're ten years in, they're probably paying. Fifty percent if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, but you're, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they are paying some level of tax to the city. Whereas before that was a vacant industrial plant that had sat vacant for seventeen years and wasn't paying anything to the city. So. I just wanted to throw that in there as kind of a, a talking point here as we talk about the benefits of it and. Whether they, allowing them to expand and stay longer is, is worthwhile.
I'm gonna let Counselor Janess get his number and installing for Counselor Janess. It's. It's also about keeping that neighbor. If, if we're gonna fight. Tooth and this is not Counselor Janess, but we have counselors that fought tooth and nail over eighty years. And we fight tooth and nail over where the housing development is gonna go and we fight about every issue. When it is gonna affect Belvedere or the Highlands or Pawtucketville. Now you have, you got a hundred thousand gallons of diesel fuel in the middle of a dense neighborhood. Predominantly, it's an immigrant neighborhood. It's people living in, and, and, and the other portion of that neighborhood is people living in generational homes. It's a, it's a working class. Dense neighborhood. People barely have yard space. I, they have slightly more of a yard than I do, but I live on the third floor of a building. They, the immediate residents need to get something out of these deals.
Okay, were you able to find?
So I have, I have the TIF agreement in front of me and it's, it's, it's a little difficult to understand just because the way it's formatted, it doesn't. It doesn't lend itself to a phone screen, we'll say, but.
At my age, nothing lends itself to the phone screen.
But yes, so Markley is paying some level of taxes, but not, nowhere near. It's not the fifty percent. It looks like it, they might be paying twenty percent. Right now. And it looks like it'll be that way through the end of the decade at least where it will jump to, I'm sorry, jumps to twenty five percent in a few years. And goes to thirty percent. But in any event, they're not, they're not paying anywhere near what. Fair value would be. I do want to adjust the job, address the job situation because I fully agree. That we do not want anyone in the city of Lowell who's taking advantage of workers through wage and hour violations. And that's why one of the things that the council's done recently is to adopt an ordinance to make it easier for the city to enforce those rules and not just the A G. Protecting our workers is, is paramount. Nobody should be going to work and not getting paid for it or being taken advantage of by a multi billion dollar company. Just simply because they need to put food on the table. If we have rules, everyone should follow the rules and I think it's important that. Any, any company, whether they're doing the work themselves or they're contracting it out and getting subcontracted. Treat your workers with respect. And if you don't, the city needs to, needs to come in and tell you that that's not okay and you're not gonna do that on our watch.
Alright, I think we've spent as much time on the Markley debate as the council has.
We could, we could probably spend a whole hour on it.
Spend a lot of the summer on it.
Be an entire show. Let's switch gears. Actually, something that was mentioned earlier and we're gonna start with you, Mr. McDonough. Parking is the number one gripe I hear from downtown residents. I'm here all the time. And those who are visiting from other parts of the city of Lowell, but interestingly enough, from what I am witnessing and hearing. I don't hear as much griping about the parking in downtown Lowell from people who are visiting from other communities or coming here from outside communities for events. So my question is, how should the city balance the needs of the residents to have affordable parking options and options that they. Believe are conducive to downtown living with the need to provide parking and generate revenue from people who are visiting the city. For specific events and other downtown amenities. Mr. McDonough.
So, part of the problem with parking downtown is when, when residents complain about parking downtown. It can be easy for those that don't live downtown to say, well, what do you mean? It's only a couple bucks an hour. Like, that's not so bad. And yeah, a couple bucks an hour is not so bad. Ninety seven dollars a month per car, if you are a, not a senior citizen, is a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot when you live either in an apartment paying increasingly high rent. Or you are in a condo, you, you own a condo and you have an HOA. That is also probably rather high for the same reasons that we're having tax problems. A lot of condos downtown have some deferred maintenance and it all came due. You're paying a private company for your trash pickup and. You're talking about twelve hundred dollars a year per car. I, we, Carolyn and I, we have a friend who, friends, they moved out of the city. They were paying thirty six hundred dollars a month. In parking, they had a baby, same age as, as Declan. And dad had a job outside the city. Mom had a job outside the city. Both college educated, they paid for both of their cars to park. There's also no market rate childcare downtown. And so grandma was driving in to take care of, of the kid. They paid for one parking pass that they were using as their visitor spot. They felt bad asking, asking visitors to be paid, which is a choice that they made. So I'm not, you know. But they were paying thirty six hundred dollars to park. You have residents in, in section eight housing at Market Mills. Who are paying a hun, ninety seven dollars a month if they're not senior citizens. They don't have a discount. There's no discount. If you're not a senior citizen, you're paying ninety seven dollars to park your car or ninety five dollars. That's a hundred dollars. I call it, in my Excel budget, it's a hundred dollars. Lowell High School students spend thirty three dollars. Lowell High School students also cannot vote for me and the ones that drive aren't driving from downtown. It is absolutely insane to me that Lowell High School students are getting the, oh, parking is a, is a public good. Rate of thirty three dollars and residents are getting the, this is a business and we need to make money enterprise account rate of about a hundred dollars. We had the, the Bay State Marathon. We said parking is a public good and we want people to go to this event. So it was a special day in the, at the Roy Garage, you could park for five dollars. What, what are we doing? It's either a business or it's not. Give me a car for fifty bucks. Give me one car for fifty and then pay the hundred on the next car. That's, that's what I think. And I think residents. Of affordable housing should be paying the high school kid rate of thirty three dollars.
Alrighty, thank you. Mr. Janess, to you.
Sure, thank you. So there were, there were a few things there I just want to circle back and touch on. First thing is whenever you're talking about parking, there's. There's not enough space. There's not enough parking to make everybody happy. Everybody wants to park in front of where they're going for free. Always have the space there, always be able to walk in and out and never have to think about it. That's not the world that any of us live in. I think we can all agree there. The, the city's parking is extremely convoluted. All the rates that, that Sean was mentioning are all exist and are all very different. And we have, our parking ordinance was kind of layer upon layer upon layer. It was like a spanicopada, if you will. Layers and phyllo dough on top of each other. We recently adopted a new ordinance that wipes all that out, flattens it out and makes it easier for the manager to be able to. Do things like create discount programs for low wage workers who need to park three or four days a week for four hours downtown. Right now, that's something that doesn't exist, but it's something that can be created and it's something that will be created. Parking is a public good, yes. It's why we built the garages. The whole idea behind the garages was to foster economic development and. The ability to actually be able to use the downtown as residences. Currently, the market rate, if you are just somebody who wants to just pay to park a car in the garage, it's a hundred and twenty five dollars a month. There is a resident discount that brings it down to ninety three dollars and seventy five cents a month. As we talked, talked about, there is the senior discount as well. There's also disabled. Anyone who is a disabled resident. If they have a disabled parking placard, both of those rates are forty six dollars and fifty cents a month. So. Anyone who's not taking advantage of those discounts, go to the parking office and make sure you are. There is also a group rate. Any twenty people, whether that's a business, whether that's whatever, can. Get access to the group rate, which gives you a discount off that market rate. We are trying to find ways. To be able to make parking affordable for as many people as possible. We are also looking at other ways of raising revenue in the enterprise fund. To be able to keep the garages functional and in, in one piece. One of the ways that we've done that is we've raised the rate for the green signs in the neighborhoods. They used to be ten dollars a year. For ten dollars, you got the right to a twenty by ten spot of city property. That you could use for your parking space. That was ridiculous. It cost more than ten dollars to print the sign. So that is now ten dollars a month or a hundred and twenty dollars a year. Yes, it doesn't approach what downtown residents pay to park in the garages. But that's about as far as we could go without, without a riot, in my mind. There's, there's more work to be done. We've done work, we've done incremental stuff. And I will note that when all of these changes a year and a half ago, last April, when that. Ordinance came to the council for a vote to increase the length or the time of enforcement of on-street parking till eight o'clock. To raise garage rates, et cetera, et cetera. I voted against it. I was the only one who voted against it. And the reason I voted against it was because we had more work to do. This last ordinance that we just passed that flattened everything out. Is what we should have done a year and a half ago. If we had done that a year and a half ago, we'd be a lot closer to being able to. Address a lot of these issues that exist for many of our residents, our employees and our visitors of the downtown. So there's still more work to be done.
You wanted to.
I did. I wanted to say that the. So we, we, the city council did put this ordinance that flattened it, gives the, the administration more leeway to move on, on parking rules. The first thing they did, right? Like we've. Counselor Scott and Dakota have twice now brought up a motion. They, most recently, they brought it back up. Last night, looking for a parking program for employees of downtown businesses. Still haven't really gotten anywhere from, from the city, right? We've had, Counselor Yem has brought up the parking for businesses in the acre multiple times. We still haven't gotten anywhere. What has the, the parking department come back with? They've come back with, well, we can charge. Thirty five cents a kilowatt hour for the plugins because we paid a hundred thousand dollar electric bill that. Which I know, and I think Wayne and I, Counselor Janess and I probably agree on. which I know, and I think Wayne and I, Counselor Janess and I probably agree on on this one. But where are the priorities, city side right now? Is it, is it nickel and diming Lowell Parkers? Or is it creating a parking system that works for all of us, that works for the city? I understand that there's a cost to things, $100 a month and that $93 is from two years, is from 2024. I swear it went to 25 and it's, it's going up. You have concrete falling from the ceiling in the Roy Garage. You have a gate that is broken at least once a month in the Roy Garage. You have plenty of deferred, you have deferred maintenance is what I'm saying. And all of this money is going largely to the debt service on the HCID garage, which is the city's misstep. And if we get, if Counselor Teddy, if they're right and we get all the development, the whole city benefits, right? So if the whole city is going to benefit from the HCID garage, that debt service needs to be accounted for at the beginning of the year from the general fund, not a last minute subsidy of, oh, boy, two or two and a half million dollars short here, take some. We know that we're going to pay over $4 million in debt. Account for that money upfront. It's, it's in debt because nobody parks in it. Or not, it's not in debt because nobody parks in it. It's, it's a loser because nobody parks in it.
Want to give you a moment to respond?
Sure, thank you. A couple of things here. A, the EV charging is a separate ordinance and that has to happen. Right now, the cost of all the electricity to charge everyone's vehicles who park in those garages is being borne by the enterprise fund. That's, that's not right. Nobody, nobody pays to put gas in anyone's car that parks there. We shouldn't be paying to fuel people's electric vehicles either. Those costs should be borne by the people who are charging the cars. That ordinance will come back and we'll get that through. That's an important part of, of plugging one of the financial holes. Overall, we have aging garages. The Roy Garage, as Sean mentioned, there is concrete that falls on cars. It's fallen on my car. It's fallen on my wife's car. We've done a lot of work to address some of that that was falling. But we have 50 plus year old garages in the Roy Garage and the Lower Locks Garage. At some point, we're going to have to have a serious conversation about what we do there. You can't make a concrete garage last forever. There's a chart that was, that was shown at a city council meeting years ago, before I was on the council, that talked about the decay curve of, of a, a concrete garage, right? You can invest some money and delay that decay, but you can't stop it, right? So I'm pushing on the, on the city manager. I had a conversation with, with the CFO about this last week. But I'll be putting forward a motion for them to start working on developing a parking facilities capital master plan. So we can start figuring out what we're going to do here because it's, it's going to continue to be an issue. And the ordinance we just passed flattened, it was less than a month ago. So we got to give the administration some time to develop those programs and I know they will. I've talked to the manager about it. He knows how important it is. It will happen, doesn't happen overnight, but we'll get there.
All right, final question. We're going to start with you, Mr. Janess, a lot of talk about the downtown. Well, we've even had a lot of talk about South Lowell. Your district, District Four, more commonly known as the downtown district, also known as the sausage district. I think you may have coined that.
No, I think that was my opponent the first time around.
Okay. You represent, and if you are elected, Mr. McDonough, you will represent the other side of the river in Pawtucketville and in Centerville. What is the biggest challenge facing that part of the district? And what will you specifically propose going forward to address that challenge?
Sure. One of the issues is it's very small slices of people in Pawtucketville and in Centerville that are actually part of District Four, right? So if you're talking about a Centerville discussion or you're talking about a Pawtucketville discussion, it's very easy for that wedge of the city to feel left out. So that's why I try to get to as many of the neighborhood meetings as I possibly can to make sure I'm listening to folks. One thing that we were finally able to accomplish this past term that was a long time coming was the reopening of the Beaver Street Bridge. That's a critical connection for that part of the city and having it open again is very important. We continue to have challenges up there. Recently, we've had, I had some discussions with some folks about the maintenance, lack of maintenance on the berm along Beaver Brook on the Pawtucketville side. That was something that had kind of gone by the wayside. The Army Corps of Engineers said, okay, well, the city will handle it. And the city was like, well, we're, nobody was taking responsibility for it. The administration went and cleaned it up so that the walking trails and everything else there are usable again, which is good. And they're going to put a a maintenance plan into effect so we won't end up in this same situation again. And I think really it all comes down to just including those folks as part of all our discussions and making sure they feel heard. The, the university obviously puts pressure on a lot of our neighbors in Pawtucketville, whether it's through residents or through their expansion or whatever it is. And so we need to make sure that, that those residents are heard and everyone's playing by the rules over there. I, I try to get out that way as much as I can, whether it's just to walk around and look and see what I can see going on. Today, I was had an email about a large dirt pile that someone had an issue with. I try to be as accessible as possible because I, I don't want to see any part of the district feel, feel left out. I think it's important to represent everyone as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
So I've spent a lot of time, I've spent a lot of time in four dash four. Four dash four is the Pawtucketville and Centerville section of District Four. And honestly, it might as well be another two sections. It's almost in there. Don't worry, there already is a four dash four A, I think. Yeah, so, but we need another one because Beaver Brook, the, the feel of those of Centerville and Pawtucketville are completely different. The kinds of issues that are being faced in Centerville and the Pawtucketville part of the district are completely different themes, but I don't even know if they rhyme. So in Centerville, one of the biggest complaints that I've heard while I'm door knocking is a surprise to nobody, it's a complaint everywhere in Florida in District Four, is parking. And it's residents seeing that they live in a fairly dense neighborhood. They live in a neighborhood that is adding density, that has narrow streets. And you have four, three, four, five working adults at one door, which means three, four, five cars at one door and you might have a driveway or you might not. So you have people that had never bought the placards before, now buying the placards. You have people parking streets over and you have fear depending on the street about the combined sewer overflow work that's coming and how they're going to be getting around the neighborhood. And then when that half of the street is closed and you can't park on it, we already have a parking problem. Now we're going to have the street closed. Where are the cars going to go? That's a hard, that's a hard issue and it's a hard thing to be looking at. In the Pawtucketville side, the Beaver Street Bridge is open, which is made canvassing lovely. I can do both without getting in my car. But it also has increased speeding as a cut through on Beaver Street. In that speeding, in the use of roads as a cut through, especially when the university is getting out, is another issue that frequently comes up. Either you have a four-way stop on your street and you're happy or you're one of the streets without the four-way stop and you're very upset and you're very nervous that someone's going to hit by a car. Having walked around with my wagon, I get it. I have almost been hit by a car at least three times. So sorry, that's, that's a very, like, that's a really kitchen table, like, what's the issue in four dash four? But the issue in four dash four is that most streets, there, there's two kinds of streets in Pawtucketville and Centerville right now. And that's they're either parking lots or they're speedways.
All right, thank you to both of you. That concludes the question and answer session. I went a little bit longer than I would have originally planned for, but I thought there were some pretty good discussions there that we were able to hone in on. So with that said, closing statements, we'll start with you, Mr. McDonough.
Okay, so once again, I am Sean McDonough and I am running for city council in District Four. I am a high school teacher. I teach special education at Lowell High School. I am running to be a more active voice for our district and a more a more active voice for our district. I am running, like it says on my signs, because I think that we can have nice things. I, I've done my best to lay out what I think those nice things are. It's an affordable place to live. It's affordable homeownership, not just market rate rentals. It's green space and some level of amenity, especially in our densest neighborhoods where people don't have yards. You need, you need public space in neighborhoods where you don't have yards. I have been endorsed by the Merrimack Valley Central Labor Council and I am the first, as far as I can tell, the first candidate for city council in Lowell to be endorsed by the Sierra Club of Massachusetts, which was pretty, pretty cool. I am running because I'm a 30 year old dad that teaches at the high school and I want a place. I, I want Lowell to be a place that I can grow my family and that I can stay and that my wife and I can stay and have a life. And too many people are moving out of the city and I want a thriving and vibrant community. And I, it's time to try something new. That's, that's honestly what I think. I think that experience is great and there are lots of kinds of experience. I've been a teacher for six years. I ask yourself if you're in, if you're in a better position today than you were four years ago, then I think you know how you want to vote. So please vote for me on November 4th, Sean McDonough.
All right, thank you, Mr. Janess. Final word goes to you.
All right, thank you very much. Once again, I would like to just say thank you to Teddy and Inside Lowell for the opportunity to come in and chat. Thank you to Sean for being here and participating in this conversation. I missed this earlier, my intro, and when, when he mentioned it, I was like, I should have said that too, which is, I also live on Market Street. I've, I've lived on Market Street since 2015. I've been a resident of the downtown since the end of 2009, long before I ever considered running for city council. I've been involved in the neighborhood groups. I've been involved in trying to give back, trying to volunteer for nonprofits or just doing whatever I can to, to help people out. I enjoy helping people. I enjoy problem solving. I enjoy meeting people, listening to them and figuring out what we can do to help. I've tried to be accessible, responsive and to really try, try to push Lowell to be the best version of Lowell it can be. I'm not trying to turn Lowell into, into something that, you know, only exists in storybooks. But not saying my opponent is, I don't want anyone to think that. I'm just trying to do the best job I can and that involve, that's being as involved as I can. And I really appreciate the opportunity I've, I've had for the past four years to represent the people of District Four and to do this work. I really hope to, to be able to continue doing that work. So I asked for, asked for your vote on November 4th or before then so that I can continue going to work every day to, to make Lowell the best version of Lowell we can have. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you to both, Mr. Janess, Mr. McDonough. Good luck to you both on November 4th and in the days leading up to this, people cast their ballots. And most importantly, thank you for taking the time to come in and talk a little bit more in depth about the issues. Good luck to you both.
Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates and of course, thank you for tuning in as well here to this special edition of the Inside Lowell Daily Pulse, a debate between the candidates vying for the District Four city council seat. As we've mentioned, voting is taking place as we speak. Mail-in ballots have already been turned in at a pretty good clip, according to Elections Director Will Rosenberg. More still coming in. Early voting kicks off on Saturday, October 25th. You have six opportunities to do so. Go to the city's website, lolma.gov, click under Departments, Elections Department. You can see the full schedule, early voting at the senior center. And of course, on Tuesday, November 4th, Election Day itself. Go to the city website, go to the Secretary of State's website and find out where your polling location is. Check on your voting status. Make sure you're registered. Make sure you're listed as active so you can take care of it ahead of time if you're not and you should be. Most importantly, we also encourage you to stay informed. Follow Inside Lowell, watch this forum, watch any other forums we've done, some past forums involving candidates. Watch all the other forums that the candidates are kind enough to participate in. They're very busy schedules, all of them work for a living. This is not their living and it takes quite a commitment for them to do the job, but also to run for the job. So your responsibility as a voter, as a citizen, as a resident, is to be informed about the choices you're making as well. Thank you so much. We'll catch you tomorrow on the special live edition, the Friday live edition of the Daily Pulse. It goes on the air live at 10 o'clock, but of course you can watch it whenever it is that you would like. Until next time, everybody, stay safe and we'll see you on the other side.